Everybody, I'm going to call this May 14th regular meeting of the Gorham School Committee to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mia De Sanctis?
Here.
Michelle Littlefield?
Here.
Sarah Perkins?
Here.
Jackie Reynolds?
Here.
Eric Thistle?
Here.
Jennifer Whitehead?
Here.
Nicole Yeo Fisher?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Can I have an approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 9th and the special meeting of April 30th, 2025?
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 9th and the special meeting minutes of April 30th as presented.
Second? Motion by Nicole, second by Michelle. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Moving on to administrative reports, are there any comments or questions about the administrative reports? Seeing none, thank you as always for the information. It is very helpful. Moving on to program review, Narragansett Odyssey of the Mind. Superintendent Perry?
Well, I'm going to very quickly turn it over to Mrs. Epler, the principal at Narragansett Elementary School. I think she's going to introduce this wonderful crowd we have with us tonight.
I was so excited to get up here. I am so pleased to be here this evening to welcome some students from Narragansett, along with our cell coordinator Danielle Quimby. Danielle has just, has an amazing vision for our gifted and talented students and the work that she has done with them and her staff is absolutely incredible. So without further ado, I would like to turn it over to Mrs. Quimby.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, so I'm Danielle Quimby, district's gifted and talented coordinator. So one of my goals this year was to grow our Odyssey of the Mind program. So this year we were able to have two teams at Narragansett. We had a fourth grade team and a fifth grade team. And for both teams, this was their first year doing Odyssey of the Mind. And so they're here tonight to tell you about their Odyssey of the Mind experience. We'll begin with our fourth grade group. So they're gonna come on up to the podium.
Every year, Odyssey of the Mind releases five new long-term problems, and teams get to choose which one they want to tackle. This involves creating a skit that is less than eight minutes long and making all of our own props and set pieces. Adults cannot help us make anything or provide any ideas about what we should do. Each problem has a set of requirements that we are scored on, but these are endless possibilities for each solution. But, yeah, but there are endless possibilities for each solution. Odyssey of the Mind is all about enhancing our creativity, team building, and problem-solving skills.
We decided to tackle the performance problem. Problem five, performance. Teams present a performance that revolves around a specific theme and incorporate required humorous elements. This year's requirements, we had to create a historical civilization and three original stories about the stars and constellations. One story had to describe, one story had to describe the origin of a constellation. One story had to describe how a star or constellation inspired a work of art or aspect of the civilization culture. Last story could be anything the team wishes, as long as it's related to the stars. This year's requirements, part two. We need to have a humorous astronomer character, me, and a stellar costume. We needed to create a lighting effect that changes the appearance of an aspect of the performance in some way. We needed a shooting star that changes its appearance while moving.
We had to create a historical civilization, our created civilization. People have been drawn out to live on the beach because of fear. They're fearful of the oceans because they don't understand light reflections. And when their ancestors ventured into the forest, they discovered something horrible, and that's why they never ventured into the forest either. It's nothing but beach for the civilization.
Stars and Constellation recap. A civilization faces a food shortage, and Jeff offered to go into the frightening, frisky, frizzy, feared forest in search of food. He finds mushrooms, brings them back, names them Green Oyster. Green Oyster, tasty, but side effects may include running around like a chimp failing to solve a four-piece puzzle. The people get rid of the mushrooms by slingshotting them into the sky. Although these mushrooms were not great for eating, they showed their true magic once flung into the sky. Once into the atmosphere, they reformed into beautiful stars, forming the newest constellation, the Green Oyster constellation. From all of Jeff's efforts pulling back the slingshot, his strength has drained. Tragically, oh, so tragically, Jeff died. But because of all of his efforts for the town, his spirit has been blessed and turned into a beautiful star, a shooting star. This is when we used a stomp rocket to shoot confetti to represent our shooting star. Every year after that, the townspeople gather near the coastlines to admire the constellations and stars soaring across the sky. In all its beauty, it has come to represent courage and compassion for the village. And after that day, it has said that for the crops began to flourish. They all gave credit for the stars and Jeff for making the miracle happen. Townspeople gather to sing.
Good job, you. You made everybody laugh.
Stars and Constellations recap, part three. The villagers have come to celebrate this holiday year after year. And years, many years later, if you look up into the sky, you'll see the Green Oyster constellation. If you look extra, extra carefully, you'll see the shooting star we call Jeff, the most beautiful shooting star of all time. We got second place!
All right. Thank you, fourth grade team.
Danielle, before they start, could you, could you introduce the names of the fourth graders? I don't think we ever got their names.
We're gonna save that for the end, but do you guys want to come back up here real quick?
We'd just love to have their names, yeah.
You want to tell them who you are? We are missing a couple team members, but these three are representing, doing a good job.
My name is Lincoln.
My name is Jude La Virtue.
And I'm Abigail.
And our missing teammates are William and William Storchane and Harper Cable.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. All right, so we're gonna do a little segue into our fifth grade team now. Anyone go ahead and introduce yourselves?
Hi, my name's Fletcher Peck.
Hi, my name is Lan Beardsley.
Hi, my name is Lucas Lovelace.
Hi, my name is Finley Besson.
Hi, my name is Eli Markey.
Hi, my name is Eli Bear.
Okay, take it away.
We did problem two, technology. Teams create innovative contraptions and devices while incorporating artistic elements into their solutions.
For this problem, we need to design, build, and operate an original robotic animal that has the ability to make characters happy.
The mech animal needed to perform three tricks that cheer up at least two characters.
The mech animal needed to go missing and get found in a very unusual place.
The performance also needed to include live music. A team created a toy for the mech animal and a trainer character who explains the tricks.
We decided to use a Lego Spike kit. We learned how to code and had a coding robotic class once a week.
The characters are Tiny G, Pops, and the dog trainer. The Tiny G has a robot dog named Rocky. They go for a walk and Tiny G finds a mysterious Nintendo Switch outside and decides to keep it, but doesn't tell Pops.
The next day, Tiny G, me, is sad because no one's coming to his birthday party. Pops calls the trainer to come over and teach, to teach Rocky a new trick to help cheer him up.
Tiny G decides to play the Nintendo Switch that he found outside, and it turns out that it's magic. Rocky gets sucked in the game, literally.
There was a note with a riddle attached to the switch. To set your companion free, you must win the tourney. Tiny G realizes he needs to win a tournament in the game to get Rocky back.
He connects the Switch to the TV and the game Street Fighter. We incorporated our live music requirement by humming the game's background music and having puppets act out the fight scenes. After three rounds of fighting, Rocky has finally set three. Pops destroys the Switch, so this will never happen again.
Fun fact, we, since we named the dog Rocky, we decided to have the background music be from the movie Rocky.
Are you guys doing your examples? Oh, Mark, you're gonna do your little sound effect?
Oh. We actually, Finn was the, Finn, not here today, but he was the main one who actually did the sound effect. He was the one controlling all the puppets in there, so.
You guys still did a good job.
Nice job, yeah.
All right, and then?
We got second place!
Now, we're gonna show you the cool tricks we programmed the robot to do.
So, first of all, we operated our mech animal by using buttons on here to use it. And we pressed this one to make it move, and it does a bunch of different things. And for this one, we put a bone out and started Rocky here. We make him go get it and bring it back because he wants to be cheered up with it. To keep the bone on, we added these Lego pieces to have it stay on. And that's the first trick. And then for the second, and then for the second trick, we have Rocky makes the ball disappear under a table, which one of you can be a table, I guess. Or the chair can be a table. And he's gonna push it under the table. Gosh, it's gone. No way! And for the third and final trick, we are making the dog do zoomies. And, and in this show, I'm explaining it to him, and then I show him what it is. And sometimes his legs gets caught, but. So Tiny G gets so interested that he starts doing zoomies and almost throws up. And this wasn't incorporated in it, but we'd like to show you him with a tail wag. So this is his tail, and.
That's it. This will be Lucas, the final slide right here.
What questions you have for us?
Any questions from the committee?
Any questions or comments? Michelle?
I have a comment. I just want to say this was a fantastic presentation. I think it will go down as one of the best I've seen yet here, sitting here. And what an incredible amount of creativity. You guys should be so proud of yourselves to come in second place. It's amazing. So we're all very, very proud of you. Great job. My question would be, what was the best part? Like, what was your favorite part of doing the whole thing?
There was, it took like so many drafts to get us there. First, instead of mushrooms, there was tiny strawberries. And there was a catapult instead of a slingshot, even crab apples maybe. And Jeff was an explorer. He was a mad mapmaker. It was weird.
I mean, it was pretty fun all around because we got to meet up each week and just have a lot of fun creating, using our minds to do what we thought was, you know, fun. And I think people like in Austin would do, we would do well, you know?
Great job. Excellent job. Very proud of you.
Another thing that we had included in our script before was like, the house was set on fire and it turned into a glass house.
Angry people trying to set houses on fire. And he had a bunch of weapons who was trying to kill the main characters.
Um, one of the parts is when Jeff goes into the forest. And we used one of the props, like, what was it? The?
The double.
Nope. Nope, the thunderbolt machine.
Oh, we had a thunderbolt machine.
Yeah, thunderbolt machine to make the sounds when he says the goblins are coming.
Any other questions or comments? Jen?
I'll just say, thank you so much for presenting to us tonight. You guys are awesome. So proud of you. I'm sure you're so proud of yourself. I hope you are. I just think it's so cool how you combine technology and making a play and entertainment. And I also see that our drama theater program is going to do very well over the next few years. You guys are so entertaining. Thank you so much.
Jackie?
I just have a quick question, and you guys really were fantastically entertaining. I think you said that adults were not allowed to tell you what you should do, and pretty much you guided it yourselves. So there's a lot of you. When you had disagreements, how did you, how did you work that out?
For us, we usually just came up with a bunch of different ideas, and we shared them out. And sometimes we would combine two ideas to make one thing. And, yeah, that's...
A compromise, yeah.
So our thing, if we disagreed, we disagreed how to make the stomp rocket, shooting star thing, whatever we want to call it, change in air. We all had different ideas, so we all took a stomp rocket home to work on it and see which one worked the best. If not, we just did anonymous votes.
Well, I love it. Handling disagreements amongst yourselves is like a really important life skill, so very proud of you.
All right, last call. All right. Thank you so much for coming. It takes a lot of bravery to talk in a setting like this, so thank you so much. We loved to hear it. You are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. You do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. The GoCat recording will be up on the town website in a couple of days.
Thank you.
Have a great night. All right, and we'll transition to our second program review, special education presentation by Kathy Hamblin.
Yeah, so while she's, while she's getting that set up because she has to transition, I'm sure she's not all that pleased about going after these students and trying to follow that.
I would just like to note that the last time I presented was after an awesome student presentation. And it just, I'm getting a complex at this point.
So members of the district leadership team that have to present, they're always after the students because I always put the students first. And so that, I'm sure that does bother them a little bit, you know? All right, so I think Kathy's bringing up the slide presentation, but.
Well, I'm trying to sign into a different one, but it keeps going back to.
Okay.
Why is it going back there? I don't know. That's what I'm trying to do.
Uh, click. Yeah, you were the.
I was doing it, right?
Manage account.
We used to just be able to put our own computers up here.
No, can't do that. Do you want to get started with some background stuff? And I can go over and get it off of my email if you'd like.
Yeah, because yours is coming up too. I can do that one. There, if you just want to verify yours. Okay, well, good evening, everybody. And so next time that I'm signed up for this, we're going to make sure there's no students presenting first. They were amazing. That's awesome. So what we'll be talking a little bit tonight is just kind of a catch-up. I, when Heather reminded me that I was presenting, I'm like, are you sure they're not bored? I feel like I've been talking about special education throughout this whole budget season. And so hopefully, some of this will be reviewed for you, but please, as we go along, don't hesitate to ask questions to clarify anything. So we'll be, thank you. Thank you very much. So, so just for those who may not know me, Kathy Hamblin, Director of Special Services. And this is Nicole Poole, Assistant Director of Special Services. And so here we are at the end of our school year. So again, like I said, you guys have been hearing a lot about special education over the past year. But certainly, there's always things that I may not think to mention to you that have been happening. So hopefully there'll be a few new, some new information in here for you. So we, as Office of Special Services, we oversee special education, Section 504, and Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act for the district. Section 504 is a civil rights law, and that is covering students who may have a disability but not, but aren't in need of direct instruction. They need accommodations in order to access their education. And so students may, they're in regular education classes, they're just needing things like maybe extended time on tests or a repeat review of information, maybe some, a meeting with a teacher regularly to be able to get that repeat review. It also covers a lot of like medical, medical needs in schools as well. Special education is for students who have a diagnosed disability and are significantly behind their peers, at least two years or more, in an area of disclassification, there's 13 areas, that is either academic, functional, socially-emotional. So there's evaluations that go along with this. It's very formal and very regulated, I wrote looking for, but it is to help them access their education. We are working on certain skills. We're hoping to try to catch them up to their peers is always the end goal. Our central office staff, that's up in our office here, we have three school psychologists. We have two district behavior specialists, one who is a BCBA. I have an administrative assistant and a part-time secretary, as well as main care billing specialist that just started this year in October. And this is giving you an idea of the staff that we have district-wide. So you can see at each school, functional life skills programs at each school. In the elementary, we have one behavior program that is housed at Village. All our schools have resource room programs. And then when they moved to the middle school and high school, all of those programs are also there. So those are continuing. History of special education population, you guys have heard me talk about this quite a bit, but this just gives you an idea. Back in 1415, which was my first year as director, we had 286 students. We had actually gone down significantly. As, when I was assistant director, we had about three, a little over 350 students at that time. We had started in 2008, Response to Intervention, RTI. And with that, we were having a lot of success. But when we got to 1415, I was like, you know, we've gone down too significantly in special education, what's going on? And when we really took a look at it, we realized our RTI staff were doing an amazing job, but they were holding on to kids too long before we really looked into that referral process. So it was kind of like the pendulum had swung a little too far, and we had to kind of come back to the middle. So as you can see, our numbers started to grow slightly. And that, over the next few years, was because we were really resetting that pendulum. But then, the growth continued. And that was not due to that pendulum issue. And what we were seeing as we hit into 2018 to 2020 was certainly, the numbers going up was our significant needs population was increasing quite drastically. And so as you can see, then, we continued, we have continued to move up. We are not the only district. This is happening all over southern Maine at this point. So this was nothing out of the ordinary for our town in Gorham. Our section 504 population was staying steady for quite a while. It started to rise up, as you can see, in like 1819. We had a 504 strategist that we had hired. I believe 1819 was her first year. We had her for a few years until, the last two years, we have not had that position. And you can see those numbers have also risen. So section 504 right now is currently being overseen by our assistant principals. They case manage them, except Nicole does help out for case managing the medical 504s at the high school, because their numbers are much more significant. We have some 504 in the elementary schools, but they continue to grow as students get older because we start to see a much more of the socially-emotional disabilities that come into play that increase those numbers. So we'll see a lot more of those at middle school, and then they are, they rise at the high school. So those numbers can be significant. Also, students who might have attention deficit disorder, for some students, it doesn't really start, they're able to work through that and accommodate themselves until they get to a certain age, and then it becomes difficult. So we do see a lot more of that in the high school level. So Nicole's been great at being able to assist our assistant principals over there. So they're scheduling, facilitating all the meetings. Each student has one annual meeting a year. They, for re-eligibility every three years, so that it comes with formal assessments. The same thing is happening in special education. They're a little less formal in 504, but it's still, we're still following to make sure, are they in need of a 504 plan? Are they in need of these accommodations? We're always working really hard to help our students move out of needing those, to become independent and not have the need for as many accommodations, if any, because they will get less and less as they, as they move into college and into the world of work. The, those assistant principals, they're doing referral intakes, they complete all the paperwork, and they make sure everybody who needs the paperwork has the copies of it. They're there to ask and answer any questions of our staff and for the families, and they're the contacts for those families as well. Few things going on in special education. We have been using special ed staff creatively for the fast, last few years. You guys have been hearing from me multiple times, we are in a time of crisis for special education staff. There is not enough staff in the nation, let alone Maine. But Maine is really being hit hard. So we have, this year was the first time that we went through the entire year being short-staffed. We were always missing at least two ed techs, if not four, throughout the entire year. Our staff continually step up to make sure that those openings are not felt by our students. They are putting in a lot of extra time and a lot of extra effort, and they are constantly working with us to think creatively of how we can make sure that we're covering those pieces. I would also like to say, our administration in the buildings assists with that a ton, absolutely. They are, I guess, honorary ed techs at this point because they are working so much day-to-day with, with the students on a one-to-one basis as needed very often. So a lot of our work is working, is going into attracting and then retaining our staff. We have been, we will begin, we will also talk more about this, increasing our use of vocational rehab services and our ASPIRE. We are preparing for the CDS three-to-five-year-olds to come to us in that few years. We're working with area directors to consider regional programming for students who can stay till 22 years of age. Special ed students have till 22 in order to earn their diploma. This is really, the students that this is affecting are my students in my functional life skills program, which means... which means they could potentially be at the high school for eight years, which is a lot. It's a little bit much, and they will tell you that, it's a little too much time. So we're really trying to work on, trying to find some other program, developing some other program for them, where they can hopefully take the skills that we're working with them and go to a different setting or a different community to practice those skills in a different way. So we're working on that. We're continuing professional development for reading and math interventions. As many of you know, those change. What was considered might work that one time gets updated. There's always new training, and our staff need to stay on top of that at all times. This was a big, last couple of years have been a big year of really working on augmentative and alternative communication, specifically with some high-tech devices. Our speech therapists have become kind of experts at this point in AAC. And they continue to do that so that we're not having to reach out and use consultation services outside. They were using those consultation services, learning from them, and now they've become them. And so, this year, they've been spending a lot of time working with our staff, both special ed and regular ed, have a better understanding of how to utilize the AAC devices within their classrooms, and how we're not giving students choice to not use their voice. So we're really kind of, really working, moving forward with those. And we're working on increasing student-led or student-involved IEP meetings. We were doing a really good job with this prior to COVID, and it's just something that has kind of fallen away. I think we still do a good job at it, but we really want to have a lot more student involvement in those meetings. And we began main care reimbursement this year. Nicole?
So, an update on our early, early childcare education. We continue to have a presence at the Cumberland County Community of Practice, which basically is open to all childcare providers in Cumberland County. Really, our group consists of Gorm, which is pretty awesome. We work with them to provide shared PD opportunities. So this year, we did a series on early indicators for OT and speech. And we did some tips and tricks for how to get kids ready for tabletop activities. Our future goal is to help build a toolkit so that these providers can give their kids the support they need if they're not qualifying for those services through Child Development Services. Right now, we are servicing 21 children with various needs, with various services, primarily speech. We, I put SDI in here, but that's special education. Time with a special ed teacher and OT. For the, our first year of pre-K, we picked up 13, we referred 13 kids from our screening, and nine of those kids completed the process and were found eligible for services. This year at our screening, we referred eight children. And we still haven't screened our other two programs, or other four programs. So, I'm excited to see what that number will look like.
And so, we are preparing to take on three-to-five-year-olds. We are very excited, I've been a big proponent of taking this on. But as Heather has mentioned, I've also put on the brakes of not taking them on too soon. And so, my head concern was that the Maine Department of Education is using, this year was their first cohort, it was the Guinea pig cohort. Cumberland County has the majority of CDS students in the state of Maine. It's too many students to be Guinea pigs with. And so, we really wanted them to be able to find where the regulations that they were going to be putting into effect were going to be, because there will be opening the special ed regulations this summer, and bringing them into legislature next, next winter. But there were a couple of questions that I need, we needed answered before we were going to agree, and they still aren't solidified yet. So, so we're not doing it next year either, because I really want to make sure that we know where that's going to be. One of them was around the catchment areas, and the expectations of where, what, who, what students would we be responsible for? It should, our regulations, they're three-year-old to 22-year-old regulations, and they should match the K-12, what we're doing should match. And so, that would mean students in Gorm, are Gorm's responsibility. We want to keep our students in Gorm as much as possible. But there are going to be students that are going to be already in a daycare, nursery school, preschool in another town, because that's where their, their parent works, and that is okay. But I could, I could end up having to be working with students in a 50-mile radius in every direction if that were to happen. And how do I know that I'm going to be responsible for their FAP, for their Free Appropriate Public Education? How can I do that in that wide of a section? How can I oversee that what's happening for them is correct? Also, how can I go into another district and tell somebody, this is how you're going to be working with my kiddo, when I don't have any oversight over them? So, so we, our voices were heard, and the DOE is saying that yes, that will be the catchment area will be in Gorm. If we have, if we run out of seats, if we only have so many, and I don't have a place, then it, then it will be my responsibility to look for somebody, someplace outside of Gorm for them. But usually, it's about the least restrictive environment, which means closest to us. So we would probably be working really closely with Westbrook, Wyndham, Scarborough. So, at this point, that's what they're saying they're going to do. I need to see it in writing. That's what we're waiting for. So we have been working very closely with them and asking our questions and sharing our experiences. At this point, most of, almost Cumberland County have been working really closely together with the superintendents to really prepare to look for what kind of regionalized program, and what pieces could be regionalized, such as a special purpose school. Right now, we have students that did not receive services because there weren't openings for special purpose schools, and they couldn't access a regular preschool at that point. So that is an area five, that's a lot. So we are working on that, and that will probably hopefully be one of our first steps that we're working together as, as a, as an area. So yeah, so we are determining with the other districts around us their readiness for Cohort Three, if not Cohort Four. But at this point, we're shooting for Cohort Three.
Voc Rehab, now we'll talk about the whole, the completely other end of the spectrum. So for those of you that don't know, Voc Rehab is a program underneath the Department of Labor, and their goal is to help individuals with disabilities find and maintain meaningful employment. And part of that is, what do they need in order to get employment? So we actually have a student right now that Voc Rehab is paying for them to complete driver's ed, and will have a support person to help them complete those, the driving hours. So that's, that's really cool stuff that we can't do as a school system. They, they really focus on individuals with physical, mental, or emotional disabilities. So we partner with them to help support our students in gaining those essential life skills to access the community meaningfully, with as much independence as possible. So, really exciting this year. We had had a presentation last year from Goodwill Bootcamp, and they partner with Voc Rehab. And we had to have student buy-in for it. So we had 17 students that really wanted to participate in this program. It's credit-based, it is for students with disabilities. So we have, this time, 17 students that are accessing summer work programming in some capacity. So we have nine students that will be returning next year, that are participating in summer work experience, and five graduating seniors that are participating in a work experience this summer. They have really cool placements. We have kids that are going to be working this summer at USM, Amato's, Moody's, Hanaford, MaineMed, and they're really trying to work with DICKS to get one of our kids into DICKS Sporting Goods. So, really cool stuff that they have the outreach to be able to make happen for our kids. So, it's awesome for those older kids.
Thank you. Voc Rehab is something that is going to be following them through the rest of their life. So they will have access to that as needed. If they're, if they find that there's a job that they weren't able to maintain, they can always apply and have that assistance from Voc Rehab. So it is really important to be able to set students up as much as possible, as early as we can. They'll start working with students at 16. Sometimes we can get them in a little earlier, just at least they can start to get to know the students. And so, it is important that the students know that that's our resource for them.
And I did forget, so glad you said that. We have one student who's not of age to be able to do the paid work experience in full. So she's doing what they call career exploration. So she'll spend her summer job shadowing with the support of a job coach at several different places, and then one place will be, will be an opportunity where she can have a paid work experience. And they get paid through Goodwill. So it's not at the expense of the employer who's welcoming our students in. And we've had students get hired at some of these placements based on how well they did during the summer.
Thank you. Functional Life Skills Program, we started talking a little bit about this earlier. So we used to have, our autism program was at Great Falls, our functional life skills program was at Narragansett, and our behavior program was at Village Elementary. But as you know, our autism program became, became very full. We had almost 36 students at one point. It's a little much for one school, for one specialized program. And so, this year, we divided up those programs into their neighborhood schools. We had done the kindergartens just the year before, but this year it was all students. Parents were very happy to have their students at their neighborhood schools with their peers that, you know, they're on the, that they're hanging out at the bus stop with, and their brothers and their sisters. And so it has gone very well at all of our schools. They were really welcomed by all the communities, and it has been very well done. So we do now have, it's no longer an autism program or a functional life skills program, it's one of the same. We divided that up many years ago, actually, just before I first got here, only because we were trying, autism wasn't really well-known of what it was and how to work with students with autism. And so by dividing it up, it was really trying to help those teachers in ed techs focus on understanding applied behavior analysis for the students that needed it. And now we're finding, we just aren't in need of that to be separated anymore. And applied behavior analysis is also something we're going to use with students with intellectual disabilities as well. So, and they would always come together in the middle school anyway, and so now they're, they're all, they're being together anyway. So we currently have 64 students in this program, K-12. In 2019, in '20, we had 45, 2014, we had 37. So you can see where that is continuing to grow for us. Many of these students now will stay past the age of 20. So we're, like I said, we're working on that. Space is always something you guys should hear about. And I know, I know it comes up often, but they are becoming more complicated for us. As they, it's not just about the number of students, but the number of adults. Like an example, our classroom at Narragansett was a regular-sized classroom, but we had to take part of it for a wheelchair-accessible bathroom, and part of it for a quiet space where students could go to decompress as needed. That takes a lot of room up. And now you have a smaller room that has six, at times, six students and five adults, that are all doing something different. They're all not usually doing the same lesson, they're all doing their individualized work. At the high school, we currently have 20 students in two classrooms. And so there could be, in each one, at any time, there could be 10 students and four to five adults at any time. And I, one of our classrooms is a regular-sized classroom. The other one is a part of a classroom, but there was a quiet, part of it was taken for a quiet space. And then the other part is, has a kitchen area and an outdated kitchen. That's awkwardly done, so it's hard to do a lot of group work in there. And an old bathroom in there, and we have a washer dryer. So it's a little bit, trying to be a little bit of a homier setting, but it's not conducive for a large group learning in that area. So they have to break it down into very small groups in order to do that, that kind of learning of the daily living skills in that area. So I am concerned around this space, especially knowing that our students can stay much longer and have high needs. And we're seeing that those numbers are continuing going up. What we have currently at elementary is making their way up to the middle school and high school. Then we have main care billing. So we hired the main care and billing specialist in October. We contracted the billing program, EDMS, and we set that up for the district. We set up approval for billing through DHHS. That was the worst and absolute hardest part of the entire thing. It is not friendly. I'm giving lots of feedback to the state about this, because they're really trying to get other districts to doing this, and it took us months, months. And we got our specialist trained, so we're billing right now for speech, OT, and PT. We had them trained, they went through that piece, they started, they began tracking their services on the system even before we were approved to do billing. And we sent, we sent consents home to the families, because we can't bill without the family's approval on that. And those are trickling in. I think we're up to about 42 students right now that we have billing for. And we will continue. So at annual meetings, we're talking with families, we've done two mailings, we're ready to do another third mailing to those families in June, to try to get some, to get those consents. And so, we received our DHHS approval in March, and we have begun billing. We have not received anything yet, because you guys have heard a lot about right now about where the pauses are, and so we're, we're waiting to see that. But it's a small amount, because it was just a small amount of students, but that will continue to grow as we work with that. So, next steps, we're going to continue to support our current staff, because it is a lot of work and something that they're all still working about, making sure how do they get it in with the services that they're doing with students. We continue to reach out to parents. And we are looking and planning on VHP training for our FLS program ed techs, which is a training that is, it's a 40-hour training, 30, 40-hour training through DHHS. Most of it is now online and individualized with one eight-hour day that they need to do. But we have to find the time for our ed techs to be able to do the online part, so then they can do the eight-hour training. And they also have to do the first aid and CPR training, and have that continually updated. So right now, we're, we're looking at the plans of when we can have the eight-hour training done throughout the year in shifts, so that we're, we can't decimate any one program by pulling too many ed techs out of one program. So we're just going to be kind of trying to see what we can do for groupings throughout the school year. And that's all I got. Any new information in there you guys have questions about, or?
Questions or comments?
Question. Do you think the consent piece will be a barrier?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it always was, even when we were billing way back when, it was a barrier. We had parents, people who just didn't understand. There's been a lot of phone calls, which is great, and that's, there's a clear letter, please call me with any questions of understanding where, where, who gets this information? Where does this go? Is it going to affect my insurance? And I think that's always the biggest question. And the letter clearly says that, there's rights that go along with that, that this will not affect your insurance. But we're, it's always a kind of a, what am I signing here? What am I signing my life away? Because you are giving away some private information. And so that has definitely been a concern. We, I will say, in the past, we've had times where parents who weren't happy with certain things, if they wanted a service and we weren't able to give that, they took consent away for billing. So sometimes that can happen, of what that looks like. So there, there definitely can be some barriers with consent. But I think right now, it's mostly just everybody understanding what that means. So as we, again, as we're having annual IEP meetings, the team is then talking, making sure they're talking about that.
Perfect, thanks Kathy.
Jackie?
Thank you. How might an interested local employer go about hiring one of your students for summer work?
You and I already talked.
I always thought members of the public might feel the way I feel.
Yeah, I, I'm going to say Con Nicole, because she's going to set you up with their case managers, and then we can, we know the kids are interested. Plus, we also have a few other people with Aspire Gorm who are also, would also be interested in helping out with that and making some of those connections. But yeah, Con Nicole Poole, 222-1019. Michelle?
I just had a quick question. I, it's not the first time I've heard the trend, like the increasing trend, and it's happening all across Southern Maine. But I was hoping you could remind me how the trend in Maine compares to the country. And then, with that, kind of my question to you is, do you feel the state is doing enough to kind of support our trend? And is there anything we can do to help support anything at the state level?
Phew, okay.
I'm sorry, it's a big one.
No, that's a lot. It is a good one, but it's a good one. Alright, so the trend is that, yeah, the numbers, especially for high-needs students are going up. They're at 2% right now, even though we keep hearing 1% is the report, it is not. It's 2% is actually the new norm. So that has been an increase across the nation. But the special ed population, we are the third highest, you might be second, we're the third highest state in terms of special education identification. And so, the national average is 15%, Maine is at 20%. We have many schools in the state that are at 30% special education, if not even a little higher. We have always kept it just under the percentage rate, which it's, it's a, it's, which is good, because it means that the funds that we have are really going to the students with the most needs. And I think part of that, that we're able to do that is because we have some really strong Response to Intervention, RTI teams, that are really working with students. So as it, as it used to be, it was special education 504 or nothing, right? It always, and people would feel like, I mean, there were a lot of teachers were doing a lot of good work, but it just felt like kids were falling through a gap. RTI kept that from feeling there was a gap, there was a safety net. So even as students, when they're dismissed from special education, they go onto an RTI plan just to watch and make sure they're not falling through any kind of a crack. plan, just to watch and make sure they're not falling through any kind of a crack. So that would be that trend piece. The state supporting, I think, yeah, the state's doing the best that they can with what they've got. I am concerned, because with the new regulations coming, they're anticipating that they're going to be proposing that students, there's one identification, which is, I was going to say other, developmental delay. And right now, students in Maine can only fall under developmental delay through their kindergarten year. And so if they come in through CDS to us with that category, we evaluate that year to see if they are presenting with a different disability in order for them to continue in special services. The DOE would like to make that go till third grade, with the best of intentions. And I'm really mixed about it, because our numbers are going to go up. There are definitely students with real disabilities around developmental delay, but I also have seen it as a just catch-all for students who really may not have significant needs that need special services, but once you're in, it's hard to also look at that. So I'm concerned on that, because I think our numbers, not just in Maine, but in Gorum will go up, as other states have seen that happen. But other states do this, and for some reason, Maine thinks we should be following what everybody else does. So that's happening. So there is the, we won't have to evaluate every student in kindergarten who comes in with that classification, which is good, because my evaluators will be able to breathe a little bit. And it will also help, there are definitely a small group of students in there that I think it will really be a positive for, but I am concerned about our capacity.
Eric, did you have a question?
I did, yes. Thank you. A two-part question. If you don't mind, could you briefly summarize what the expectation on your end is around main care billing kind of over the next foreseeable future, 12 months or so? And to follow up on that question, is there anything that you think the school committee can do to exceed the current expectation that you guys have?
For main care billing? So I think everybody is well aware, we don't know where main care is going to be in a year from now. So at this point, our plan is for next year to just continue what we're doing, supporting the staff that are currently doing our speech, our OT, and our PT. We will do that all through next year. I was concerned, because the person, our billing specialist that we had hired, I was like, ooh, I don't know that this is a full-time piece for her. But my secretary, who's half-time, is retiring. So for next year, she's going to take on that role with the main care, so she's got a full-time piece. We'll maintain the main care at half-time while we figure out where things are going to go. We'll be working on getting our staff trained as BHPs for our functionalized skills and our behavior programs, so that hopefully, the year after, we could start looking at, working on billing for day treatment types of programming, which is for students with significant needs, Section 28. So we're working on those. We're working to prepare for that, and while we wait and see where things are going to land, hopefully in the next year.
Yeah, if I could add, I mean, Kathy and I have talked at great length about this particular piece and where the uncertainty is with the billing and the funding at the federal level. We think that probably now is not the time to press a gas pedal. We're not going to press the brakes, so we're going to keep doing what we've been doing, and we're going to prepare for us to continue to strengthen and increase our billing practices over time. But I think this year is going to be a little bit more preparation behind the scenes with the BHP training to set us up for success in the next year, if those funds still exist. And if they don't, then we haven't gotten too far onto the platform and falling off.
Yeah. I just worry, I mean, we weren't going to be really doing any day treatment billing next year anyway. That takes a significant amount of time to plan for and be prepared for, but we're probably not going to be doing quite as much gung-ho movement, because we want to wait and see. It's a lot of stress on the staff, quite honestly, and I don't want to put them through that if it ends up being something that we're not able to do. Because I got to keep the staff a god.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm sorry, as far as things you can do, I've said this before, and I've said it several times at the state level. I have been asked for years, and I've had two directors who are really interested in it, but I just haven't heard a lot. We need an insurance policy. Districts need an insurance policy. The reason that many districts were not billing was because there's a risk on the district. If a mistake is made on our part, just paperwork-wise, districts were paying hundreds of thousands of dollars back because of paperwork issues. And it was really communication between DHHS and DOE and miscommunications that had happened that had caused that. It wasn't the district's fault, but they still had to pay it back. It'd be great if, the first time a mistake is made, there's a pot of money somewhere where it's paid from the Department of Ed. The second time a mistake is on me. But if they could do that, I think we would probably get a lot more districts in Maine, knowing that there's at least something, that they got our back. They want to bring the money, you got to have our back. So that's what I would love to see, if possible.
Mia?
Kathy, you had some space concerns. What do you anticipate needing over the next couple of years?
Over the next couple of years, I think we're going to be okay the next couple of years. I think it's five years from now that I'm most worried about. I've been talking with Brian and, I almost said Quentin, well, it was Quentin, now it's Lucas, around the middle school and high school and our needs there. We're really taking a look at our numbers and then what we're doing. I think if we can do some work and get some regionalized kind of work happening with our older students. We have a program when, for the appropriate students, that the director's developed with Strive called TOPS, and that's for students who are in their 13th and 14th year. But now I need something for 15th and 16th year. And so that's where we're really hoping to put together with them, and if we can. Because as you've heard me talk to about it, it's not necessarily a full day, because LRE is based on, the least restrictive environment is based on your student, your peers. And they don't have same-age peers in the high school at that point. Their same-age peers are adult ed. And so then we're talking, it's a few hours class a week, but we're really focusing on what does that student need in order to be able to move on into their next phase of adulthood? Whether it's that they're going into work or a day program. What is the skill that you need in order to make that transition easier? So we can focus specifically on just a few of those skills. It's not going to be about the math and the reading and the writing so much. It's really going to be more about the social aspect, the vocational piece, maybe the math and the reading that's about that position, that job, focusing on the functional piece.
Any other comments or questions? All right.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Oh, that's not mine.
And I just feel the need to say out loud, we only clap for kids, so it's nothing against Kathy whatsoever. Okay, moving on to 3.1 public comment. Is there any member of the public wishing to make public comment? Being none, we'll move along to 3.2, student school committee members.
Hi. Starting off, thespian inductions were held last Friday to celebrate the success of new thespian inductees and graduating seniors. Additionally, GHS thespian society will be holding the thespian showcase on May 30th, which is basically a talent show, but with all like musical numbers. And then Gorum held spring concerts to celebrate the end of the season. Band's concert was held earlier this week, and chorus will be held in the upcoming weeks. This week's students at GHS are participating in Spirit Week, Path to Prom, and prom will be held Saturday, the 17th. We are very excited. And senior internships start next week on the 19th, again, super exciting for our graduating class. And graduation is taking place on the GHS football field on June 8th, followed by a car parade to celebrate the 2025 graduates.
There's going to be a viewing of Dakota 38 this Friday in the auditorium. Students are finishing up their AP exams this week. Special Olympics is being held May 16th, and academic awards night is coming up on May 21st. Gorum High School students hosted the Taste of Nations event, which was a big hit, and students are currently voting for class officers this week.
Any questions or comments? No, seeing none, thank you. Lots going on. Moving on to the superintendent report.
Yes, so I have a few things I'd like to just update folks on. Very quickly, I won't read everything here, but just letting folks know that we continue to monitor federal funds and some of the shifting landscape at the federal level. Thus far, nothing has changed. We are still receiving all of the funds that we're supposed to have received. The thing that seems to be coming up is a question mark for the coming year, more than anything that would impact us potentially, is Title II funding. Title II funding is funds that we've used from the federal government each year. We get about $80,000 a year, so it's not a huge amount of money. But we do use it to offset professional development across the district. And so that could be something that may impact us in the coming fiscal year. We do have a plan to address that, if that does happen. And that would involve a combination of shifting of resources and also perhaps a reduction of ability to attend some professional development courses. But between those two, we would be able to accommodate for that if it does occur in the next fiscal year. So just wanted to keep you up to date. If I hear anything more on any of the other funds, then I will let you know, but otherwise, things are continuing to move forward. I did want to mention also, just, you know, because I think the vote's coming up on June 10th, certainly there's a referendum vote. It's not a big statewide election, so probably the numbers are not going to be out there for a lot of people to attend. But there is also, often, the polling places is a location where people go to gather signatures for referendum, a state referendum. And this year, there may be a push, or there is a push, around a citizens veto of the original budget that was passed by the state legislature earlier this year for the next biennial. And if that occurs, I just want folks to know that if, they need to get 197, it's a huge number of signatures across the state, 197, something like that, thousand signatures or 67,000, I can't remember the number, but it's a huge number. If they do get that number of signatures though across the state, then that would place it on the ballot. If it places it on the ballot for November, then there would be no budget for the state starting July 1 through November until that's resolved. And so that would have serious consequences, not just for schools, but for municipalities, for anybody that's a nonprofit or works collaboratively with state funding in any way, that would have a huge impact. And so just letting people know that, although that may sound like an intriguing process and a good thing to try to go forward, because there were some legitimate concerns around potentially how that budget was passed earlier in the legislative session, that would be a really rough way to go about trying to address that issue and impact a lot of people negatively. So just letting folks know about that. Budget finance update. Budget was passed by the town council last night. Congratulations to all the work that was done by the school committee on that particular piece. It was passed unanimously by those present, 6-0 was the vote. The next step now is the June 10 referendum, encouraging everybody to go and vote, even though that just seemed like a very, it was a very good, positive result with the town council. You know, it's one of those times where, you know, apathy might catch you. So it is a public referendum. Everybody in the community of Gorum is welcome to vote. We would like everybody in the community of Gorum to vote. So please get out there and vote on June 10, and encourage neighbors and friends and family to do the same. Then I wanted to mention also that, let's see, oh, I've also gotten a little bit of feedback recently about finance, finance information, and folks wanting to know what our financials look like, and perhaps not being able to see that. And I just wanted to point out that we do post our monthly financials, which are reviewed each month by the finance committee, on our website. So if anybody's interested in seeing our monthly financials, we do do a detailed report that you can see on our website. You just go to About Us, School Committee, because it's under the School Committee with the finance piece, and then go into the Board subcommittees. Finance Committee is the committee that reviews those. Look in that folder, and everything is there, going back to 2015, 16, maybe 16, 17. So feel free to check that out if you're interested in looking at our financials. And I think that's about it that I wanted to mention for this one, other than a big thank you to the members of the school committee, Nicole, Sarah, and Mia, who participated in our recent negotiation sessions with the GTA. Those were wonderfully done, the results of which are later tonight. But that's a lot of time, effort, and commitment, and I just wanted to say thank you for your time involved in that. That's it.
Any questions or comments for the superintendent? Seeing none, we'll move on to school committee communication. Start with Eric.
Yeah, I actually, I was reminded yesterday, and I wanted to share a really positive experience that I've had recently and remind people of this opportunity. In Gorum, through the school department, there's the ELO, which stands for the Extended Learning Opportunity. And I learned about it for the first time earlier this year, and reached out, introduced myself after our meeting. I have invited a student to work at my office and had a really incredible experience for myself. It's very rewarding. I'm hearing reports that it's also very beneficial for this particular student. But the reason I wanted to bring it up was because I was nervous about the time commitment that it would create. But I have been incredibly impressed with the ELO instructor and the coordinator, and the communication, and the support and resources that they have offered, if necessary, to make this a transition that works for both sides. So anybody that's interested, there's a really strong support system from the administration around that program.
Thank you. Michelle?
Just a couple of quick things. I believe it was last week, I'm losing track of time here, but last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. And so I know in Gorum, we kind of use that week to thank everyone in the schools, and I just wanted to say a huge thank you. That's never going to be enough, just to say it, but we really appreciate all of our educators, and I hope last week was great. And then just a quick thank you, again, to the town council around how the budget season went this time. I think we heard it last night from most of them, that it was one of the most collaborative processes yet. And I think that just was fantastic. So just wanted to acknowledge the town manager and the council for their involvement in the process this year.
Jackie?
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the upcoming referendum and budget vote. Being newer to this community, in the last few months, I've seen, you know, some of the back and forth on social media and baseless comments about a lack of transparency, which you've been to any meetings, you know that the whole budget process is fully transparent, and the information is always accessible. And it did, of course, bother me a little bit to see someone come to the meeting last night who had never been to a meeting during the year, when all the information was accessible, and decided to make a big stink about the budget. So to anybody that might be watching this, that might have seen that, anybody could have gone to any meeting throughout the year and gotten the real information, and everything is completely open, and there are no secrets. I'm not trying to make a YouTube video and get noticed for it. I'm just saying that if you have been involved and want to be involved, come to the meetings, and definitely come and vote. Or you could go back and watch prior meetings and vote on that. Please don't vote on one person who decided that this was their critical moment. But I was very happy last night to see that everybody else in the meeting maintained, you know, decorum, and the meeting proceeded. So thank you for that.
Nicole?
I, again, will echo Jackie and Michelle in that the unity that has been shown is just, I think, incredible, given some previous years, that it's really been a great process, I think, for everyone involved. And again, want to acknowledge the town manager and the town council for last night and the kind words that they spoke. I had the pleasure this morning to be a volunteer for an opportunity that Heather Whitaker at the middle school who works with the Katahdin team puts on every year, where they go into the giving garden that's at the middle school, and they have kindergarteners from Great Falls that come, and the students lead them in different stations. And it is just, it always puts a smile on my face that we have such a great connection with our elementary schools and middle schools and the high school, and that there's a lot of cross-opportunity there. But to see those kids be almost mini-teachers to the kindergarteners and tell them, could you please raise your hand? And do all those things, but also educate them on this wonderful garden that provides such a great opportunity also to our community. You know I always plug our backpack program. We are getting ready to sort of wrap up the year. That does include sending out summer boxes to families who struggle with food insecurity, so there is also other opportunities to donate to that before the school year. And so I encourage folks, you can always go to the website, which I tend to mix the words up, Give Grow Gorum. I want to switch them always. But definitely, if folks are interested or want more information, you can always reach out to me or to Heather Whitaker at the middle school.
Jen?
Okay, so I actually prepared remarks tonight. That's how you know I'm serious about this. So I was also at the meeting last night at the town council, and the comment, at first made me very angry that we, that Jackie was talking about, but I'm not going to focus on that. I really want to focus on the students and our administrators. So I just want to say, not only as a Gorum school committee member, but as a parent of Gorum students, and someone who sees and deeply values the incredible work being done every day in our schools, I just, I want to give our students and our administrators all the attention. Our students show up day after day, navigating challenges that we never had to deal with growing up. They embrace growth, learning how to lead, how to listen, how to think critically and act compassionately. Our teachers and staff give their energy, creativity, and heart to lift up every student who walks through their doors. They don't just teach curriculum, they build doors. They don't just teach curriculum, they build character, nurture curiosity, and provide a safe space for our students to thrive. Our administrators carry the weight of leadership with integrity and vision. They continually look for ways to improve, to adapt, to lead with both strength and compassion. They step into the arena every day. And that's why I want to share this quote by President Theodore Roosevelt. These words are so relevant, not only today, but they were literally what got me through my first term as a School Committee member, especially during COVID. So here you go. It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, and who at worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold, timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat. You are in the arena every day daring greatly. We are not perfect as a district. We make mistakes. But what I see in Gorham and our community is that we strive constantly to grow, to improve, and to do right by our kids. I see a school system filled with courage, compassion, and commitment. So to our students, keep showing up, keep being brave enough to learn, to speak, and to care. To our teachers and staff, thank you for the difference you make quietly, consistently, and profoundly. To our administrators, your leadership matters more than you know, and it is seen. Let us continue to stand together, not in reaction to critics, but in affirmation of who we are, what we stand for, because we know the truth. Gorham is filled with people who dare greatly. I plead with our town to get out and vote to support our children and our school system. Thank you.
Well said. Mia?
I'm sorry you have to follow that.
But that's gonna be a tough one. So I have a couple of things that stood out to me in the administrative reports. And we did see two amazing presentations from the Narragansett Odyssey the Mind teams. But I did want to point out, Great Falls School did have a fourth grade Odyssey the Mind group that qualified for the World Finals at the end of May. So shout out to them. Another interesting, I wish that Erin Eppler was still here because she participated in this program, but a shout out to Sarah Little, who is the FLS teacher at Narragansett, led a team of over 30 staff, students, and family members at the Best Buddies Friendship Walk. Narragansett was one of the first K-5 schools in Maine to become a Best Buddies partner, which is, it's an organization that supports inclusion and students with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So shout out to Narragansett for that. And just a message to all of our students from pre-K right up through grade 12. So there's a lot of year-end activities that are coming up, between field days, we have field trips, we have concerts, we have the prom, we have assessments, we have step-up days, senior walk, and graduation, just to name a few. My message to you would be to do your best and to have fun and be safe.
Well, as usual, you all have already covered everything I could possibly say. I will just echo a thank you to the town council and the town staff. And also, the the importance of working together, being collaborative, being transparent is not just because, although we do want to be nice to each other and work well together, it's to benefit the taxpayers, the children, and the community as a whole. We can be much more effective together than we ever could be working against one another. So I very much appreciate the process this year and hope that it continues in coming years. So I also am going to go over there to embarrass Amelia for a few minutes. So we've had several student School Committee members in the time that I've been on the committee. And I just want to acknowledge your incredible use of your voice while on this committee, always respectful, always responsible, always understanding the weight of your words and that you speak on behalf of more than just yourself. But thank you for using your voice. We need to hear it. And you knew exactly when to use it. So thank you. You are going to make such an incredible impact in this world. And someday, we can say that we knew you when. So I've got a card and flowers if you want to come on over.
You can clap, right? All right. So moving on to School Committee Standing and Special Committees, Finance and Facilities, Michelle?
Yes, so the committee met on April 30. And we discussed first the HVAC maintenance proposal. And then I recall a robust conversation about the monthly financial statements. We also reviewed our substitute report and did the warrant review, overtime reports, and the credit card review. And our next meeting is scheduled for May 28 at 7:00 p.m. in the superintendent's office.
6:00 p.m., sorry.
Oops, 6:00 p.m.
All right. Any questions for Michelle? Seeing none. Oh, and now I can't see. Policy, Mia?
Yes, thank you. So we also met on April 30. One of the things that we talked about was a new policy, ILFA, which is the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness and Response. Again, it's a new policy. It was recommended by Drummond and Woodsum. We reviewed a sample policy and made some adjustments for clarity. Additionally, we added an online safety education piece. We are looking into some additional questions that we had. We're getting feedback from the middle school and high school administrators. Is this topic covered currently in K-12 health classes? What are the teachers' thoughts on including it? We're following up regarding the pre-K component of the policy. Right now, it just speaks to kindergarten through fifth grade. So we're wondering how we're going to incorporate that into pre-K. We have questions about what's included in the elementary curriculum materials and questions on whether or not this is something that should be included in both a volunteer and sub orientations. So we will get some of those answers and just further discuss at our next meeting. We also talked about policy IHBA-L, which is the Grievance of Persons with Disabilities. We all agreed that it makes sense to remove it being a policy, because really, it's a lot more of a procedure than a policy. So we replaced it with ACR, which basically, if there's an R at the end, it means that it's a procedure. And it ties more directly to policy AC. So we did replace it with A-C dash R. The committee agrees that it's an important process. It's just being cleaned up and moved to procedure based on a recommendation from Drummond and Woodsum. Our next meeting is also on May 28 at 6:00 p.m. in the Assistant Superintendent's Office.
Questions for Mia? Seeing none. Personnel Committee, Michelle?
So the Personnel Committee met on April 29. And we discussed feedback and the reception of our first communication, which you all should have seen hit the press. We also discussed a potential plan for a secondary communication to go out. So we'll be discussing that a little bit electronically, and you'll be maybe seeing some updates about that. And we also talked about next steps in terms of future meetings. So our plan is, now that we have kind of our communication plan underway and going, moving forward, we're going to pivot over to some topics around hiring process overview, hiring data, and data from our posting site. So just a few reviews there. And our next meeting is scheduled for May 27 at 5:00 p.m. in the upstairs conference room.
Questions for Michelle? Seeing none. Vocational Education, Jen?
Yes, we held our last meeting of the year last Thursday, May 8 at WRVC. And two things from the meeting that I wanted to bring to you is that we have a Gorham student that was recognized at the meeting, Jackson Levertu. Actually, his little brother was here tonight as well. He won the statewide, and I don't know the name of the competition, but he had to build something in a certain amount of time, and he built an amazing wooden piece of furniture. He actually has his own business doing furniture. But for a sophomore to be recognized by the state, and he actually is going to a national competition that he's raising money for. You can see in Gorham, we highly value vocational education. I believe it's 76 students that we had. I could get that number wrong.
Yeah, there's 76.
76 students, yes. And one other thing from the meeting I wanted to bring out is that Westbrox WRVC, they're thinking about adding a few different programs. One of them is for ninth graders that would be kind of like a smorgasbord, trying different things out to see what, you know, what they would want to do later. It sounds like that would be an amazing class. So hoping they do that.
Questions for Jen? All right. Ad Hoc Committees, Gorham Teaching and Learning, Eric?
Yes, the Teaching and Learning Committee met recently on May 12, which will be our last meeting of the year. The the group has continued over the last six months or so to discuss what is really called the Portrait of a Graduate, which is kind of a district-wide metric that is used to identify the skills and different ways in which we would like our graduates to be prepared. It's district-wide, which is different than the vision of a graduate, which sounds very similar, but and it does have a lot of overlapping principles. But the vision of a graduate is necessary because the Gorham High School is accredited by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which requires the vision of a graduate. The Portrait of a Graduate, which we've been discussing, comparing to other municipalities and school districts, and incorporating, you know, how it reflects our metrics of success in Gorham, our Gorham mission and vision, and we're talking about and continuing to tinker with that to put forth a Portrait of a Graduate, and and how to use that and measure that. The next meeting is not until fall of 2025.
Questions for Eric? No. Seeing none. Anti-Racism and Equity Committee, Nicole?
Our last meeting was on April 17. I think this was the first meeting that we were back together as an entire group since our Eat and Learn. So there was time spent sort of getting an update and processing the event as a whole. Group work does continue with the Equity Toolkit and the Student Voice and our, I believe it's the last meeting of the year as well, which will be on May 22 at 5:30 in the Gorham High School Library.
Seeing no questions. Dropout Prevention Committee, Mia?
We have not met since our last meeting. We will have a final meeting for this year. It's going to be on May 28 at 3:30 via Zoom.
All right. No questions there. Fiscal Sustainability Committee, Michelle?
Yes, so the Fiscal Sustainability Committee had its final meeting this past Monday evening. In that meeting, we did a review of our full report of findings and recommendations. It was an incredible, an incredible process to be part of. And this document that we have coming out of it, I think you'll all be very impressed by the work that's been done by this committee. So we have a set of recommendations that will be coming forward to you, quite a few. Still scrolling here to count the number, around 18. We also have a really solid, in my opinion, set of fiscal indicators that have been established and not fully defined, but solid, solid final drafts, I would say. So there were, I counted 21 people on this committee at various times. And in the meeting, I used the opportunity to thank the members on behalf of the School Committee and myself. But I know that we all felt, you know, the the impact from this committee in this process, because that committee's work was happening in tandem. And we could take things and use them and use conversation to collaborate. It was just really amazing to see the process. So while I'm sad it's ending, we do still have a little bit more to come. So they'll, they are, we are trying to coordinate a presentation jointly to the to the School Committee and the Town Council. And though this group is going to be dissolving, we do recommend and plan to replace this committee with another that will continue, so in a slightly different format. So more information about that will be coming forward, and a date for that workshop will be announced in the near future.
Well, that is very, very exciting. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to second reading of the following policies, K-9 Patrol and Searches, JIHD, and Individual Education Records, IHBA. Mia?
Yes, so neither Dr. Donahue or I received any additional recommendations or changes. So I would like to make a motion to approve the policies, JIHD, which is K-9 Patrol Searches, and IHBA, Individual Education Records for the second and final reading as presented.
Second? Motion by Mia, second by Michelle. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Moving on to New Business, Consideration and Action on Elimination of Positions, Superintendent Perry?
Yes, thank you. This is never really a pleasant conversation, but it is a necessary one, as we adjust our budgets each year and have to eliminate positions in order to perhaps create new ones in different areas or just reserve funding and efficiencies in our schools. Whenever we have to eliminate positions, we do have to go through a process where we formally vote to eliminate the positions. And then if there are any termination of contracts associated with those positions, that's the next vote that's coming up. So this particular piece here is, this agenda item would formally eliminate one and a half positions. We agreed to eliminate during the budget approval process. These are just teaching positions, by the way. Anything that is not a teaching position, we wouldn't have to go through this process with. Those positions were one full-time GHS technology teacher position and a half-time elementary teaching counselor position. So you have to vote to eliminate the position in order to make sure that that's separately done from the budget. So that's what I'm asking you to do at this point.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to terminate the contract of GHS.
Oh, what's different? Yep. Oh, do we? 6.2.
Well, did I get it? Yep. Okay. I make a motion to eliminate the full-time position of the GHS technology teacher and the .5 position of the elementary teaching counselor effective at the conclusion of the 2024-2025 school year.
Motion by Nicole, oops. Second by Michelle?
All right. Questions? Comments? This is, of course, one of the more difficult things that we have to do as a committee. And while not easy, it is in the best interest of the district overall in this fiscal year anyway. And that's what we agreed to in the budget. Sorry, I feel like I stumbled over my words a little bit there. Does anybody have any questions or comments before we vote?
I have a comment. I think that this is difficult. Again, if folks want to go back and look at our budget recordings, this was talked about in depthly. And what I will also want to emphasize is Principal John Drow's plan for this, you know, technology position, and that this is really a plan for the next couple of years with some some changes in regards to that. And that he spoke very eloquently about that and much more in depth than I can do right now. But I would highly encourage folks to go back and re-watch that if they're looking for some more information about what the plan will be moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments or questions. All those in favor? Seven zero. Okay, 6.3, Consideration and Action on Termination of Contracts.
Yes, so this is the associated vote, because there is one individual that's currently employed that is impacted, and therefore, there does need to be a vote to take it, to terminate the contract. However, I also, this is a little wonky, because you also have another one that you have to do, which is a result of last year's budget discussions. What happened was, we have a teacher that was, their position was terminated last year for FY25 process. But because another teacher was going on sabbatical, that individual did not have to have their their contract terminated at the time. The position was terminated last year. You did vote on that. But you didn't have to terminate the contract because of a sabbatical that was occurring. The teacher that is, that was on sabbatical is now coming back. And now the contract does need to be terminated. So that's where that other position comes in. So at this point in time, what you're looking at is a termination of contract for Eamon White, who's the individual that's currently employed as a GHS technology teacher. You don't have to terminate a contract for the half-time teaching counselor position, because no one was impacted by that adjustment. And then there's the other position that's going to be terminated for the contract for Ian Ryan. That is the position that was last year impacted. So. That is the position that was last year impacted, so.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to terminate the contracts of GHS technology teacher Eamon White and GHS social studies teacher Ian Ryan due to the fact that their positions no longer exist for the 2025-26 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Mia, discussion? Jen?
I just got to say, this is my first time seeing the name and realizing who this is. This is my son's AP history teacher. My son doesn't like history. When asked this year who his favorite teacher was, this is who it is and actually made him love AP history. This is a very talented person who connects with students. I am very sad to see that we're losing him from our district. And I just recommend if we ever have the opportunity to hire him again, please do. I am, yeah, this is.
Michelle?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a second to echo the sentiments that have already been said. But I think elimination of people's positions is always the heaviest and the hardest. So this just was not a decision made lightly in the budget process. And it's really with a heavy heart to make that motion and to take this vote, so.
Eric?
Following up on Jen's comments, I happen to have met this person over the last year in the community in GORM and even outside of teaching, a model citizen in GORM, a supporter of positive things in the town. And I'm very sad to see that this was the person. I had, I had actually, it is now coming to me after having seen the name that I had heard this and had a brief conversation. I can say that it was received with a positive attitude and an understanding of the dynamics of the school committee and the choices that we have to make. And I would also, again, echo Jen's sentiments that if there ever becomes an opportunity, this is a person that we are lucky to have and it's sad that we don't.
And if I could, I just want to say that the utmost professionals in these conversations, they're difficult conversations to have, but we have the utmost professionals.
All right, Sarah?
Oh, sorry. I would also like to echo the two sentiments said before about rehiring. This teacher taught me AP US history my sophomore year and truly shaped my inspirations for my future. And I can proudly and strongly say that if it wasn't for his class and for his strength and encouragement throughout my sophomore year, then I genuinely don't think that I would be taking the career path and the major that I will be pursuing next year in college. So if the opportunity ever arises to rehire this teacher, I would strongly encourage and recommend that that step be taken for other students who might be in my position.
You?
And I would also want to recognize Mr. White as well. He was a part of the team that presented to us, I think it was last fall, as the technology team. And you could tell he really enjoyed working with the students that he did. And it really left an impact on me to kind of see them as a team, but also him. And I believe at that time, he may have been a newer part of the team, but it seemed like they really gelled. So again, to echo, the, the difficultness of these decisions does weigh a lot on us and it's, it's hard. And we want to recognize all of their accomplishments and things that they've done for our students in the community.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor? Seven, zero. 6.4, consideration and action on the attached list of probationary teachers.
Yes, so this is a requirement by state statute that each and every year, the school committee take action to, for two things. One is to consider those new hires that were probationary year-one teachers this year and assign them a second year probationary contract. So there are two years required by state statute that teachers are on probationary contract. So one of your votes is taking the list of those that were on first-year probationary contracts and approving them for a second year probation. The other piece of this motion later is going to be taking those that were already on their second year probation and voting to approve them to move into what's called a continuing contract status. That is, that's not tenure. We don't have tenure in the state of Maine. It's, it's continuing contract, which means that what, there's not an annual vote each year at that point in time for them. Their contract automatically renews unless something stops that from renewing. So that's what you have for two lists that you see there. One list is your probationary year one to year two. And the other list is your probationary year two to year three. I bring the nominations forward. You approve the nominations. And then the contracts are issued from that point.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the list of teachers moving from first year to second year of probationary status and the list of teachers moving from second year of probationary status to continuing contract status as presented in the 2025-2026 contract year.
Okay, motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jackie. Discussion?
I just want to say, of the list that, that folks can access, I have had lots of interaction, actually, with a few of these folks, particularly some of the first-year folks. My child has two of these teachers as a part of her team. And it has been a wonderful experience, especially going into sixth grade, which is not an easy year and not an easy year for a parent either. And it's been a really wonderful, wonderful experience. And even some of the, the second-year teachers as well, I've had contact with and really, really glad to hopefully see that we can carry them forward because they're great additions to our teaching staff.
Seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor? Seven, zero. Let's see, consideration and action on the appointment of personnel?
Yes, so it is hiring season. So you can expect this on the agenda for every time now forward until we are done meeting for the year. So we have, tonight, I have four different positions that I'd like to nominate to move forward for professional contracts. Those would include Samantha Person for the K-5 phys ed position at Great Falls, David Champa for the special education resource room at Great Falls, Casey Matic, eighth grade science math at the middle school, and then Kim Moska for special education at the functional life skills classroom at the Village Elementary School. I would let you know that I have met personally with each of these individuals and have communicated with them and ensured that the process for hiring that they underwent was a productive process and an appropriate process. And I feel very strongly that these are great candidates to move forward and bring forward to make new GORM RAMs out of, so.
There you go. All right, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the superintendent's nomination of Samantha Person, Dave Champa, Casey Matic, and Kim Moska for the positions presented and direct the superintendent to issue contracts for the 2025-2026 school year.
Good job, Michelle. Is there a second? Second by Jen? Any discussion? I am excited to see multiple special education folks on this list after Kathy's presentation earlier. Seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor? Seven, zero. Next up, consideration and action to authorize transfers between cost centers.
All right, this one is sometimes a little wonky to explain each year, but I'll give it my best. And those of you that are veterans have heard this before. But each year, what happens is at the end of the fiscal year, we have to be, we have to stay underneath of our budgeted items in each of our 11 categories in, in the budget that we report to the state. Now, a budget is developed, it begins being developed in October of one year. It doesn't even start to get spent until July 1 of the following year. And then it has to go through a whole year. As you can imagine, there's lots of adjustments and things that move around in there over the course of time. And so there may be a line where, a line might be over in one of the 11 categories. Now, the state statute allows for us to transfer up to 5% of each of the 11 categories into another category to offset those overages. I'm not saying that any of that is existing because we don't know yet. The school year is not finished. The fiscal year will not be done until June 30. But what this motion does is it allows Hollis and I to look at those items. And within the statute and the requirements of the law, so staying within the 5% that's required by law, this motion allows us to go ahead and make those movements so that we're all balanced for the audit that is actually starting, the preliminary audit's starting in two weeks. So this just allows us to make those movements if we need to. Again, staying within the state statute as necessary. And we would report back any movements that we would make in those areas to you. So that's kind of what that does. There is a linked motion in there that's got legal language in it that does need to be read.
Is there anyone that would like to make that motion?
Sure.
Oh, Jackie, go for it.
Voted that pursuant to sections 2307 and 1485-4 of the title 20A, the superintendent of schools be authorized to transfer from available funds budgeted for the current fiscal year operating budget, not more than 5% of the total appropriation for any cost center, and not more than $2,673,796 in the aggregate to another cost center or among other cost centers of the current fiscal year operating budget, provided that the total current fiscal year operating budget shall not be increased by such transfers.
Well done. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Jackie, second by Nicole. Discussion?
I just have one question about kind of the, the tracking of when we move funds like this. Is this something that we keep record of just to see like year over year how much we're moving and for what reasons?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. And that's part of why we report it to the school committee if we do have to. I will tell you that in the past two fiscal years, we haven't had to do it at all. But this allows us to do that in that short timeframe without having to come and bring you guys back for a special meeting to give us approval.
Seeing no other questions or comments, all those in favor? Seven, zero. First reading of the following policies, Child Sexual Abuse Awareness and Response, JLFA, Grievance of Persons with Disabilities, IHBA. Mia?
Yes, so these were two that we discussed at our meeting at the end of April. They are, the Child Sexual Abuse Awareness and Response was a policy that needed to be put forward based on recommendation from Drummond and Woodsum. So I would encourage you, it was a difficult one to, to look at. We did make quite a few changes. So if you would just take a look and please give any feedback to Mr. Donahue or myself, that would be great. Also, we have the Grievance of Persons with Disabilities. And I believe we just made a very simple correction to that one. So not much has changed.
All right, so those will come again, up again at the next meeting?
Yes.
All right, we will be moving into executive session. At this point, we will be coming out to take a vote, but we will be doing so upstairs. So do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
I make a motion to enter into executive session to consider the negotiated contract with GORM Teachers Association pursuant to 1 MRSA Section 405-6D.
Nicole, second by Michelle. Discussion, all those in favor? Seven, zero.